Yeah, we've had some conversations individually with the board on it. And one of the things too about the location of the rest of the tanks at EMS, no insurance?
Yes, no insurance.
No insurance on the facility? And then I heard quote one time, you're going $30,000 to move it?
To move it at one time, yes. But I believe we can get it done and we've all kind of talked to them.
We moved it there, but we didn't move it there.
Yes, yep.
Because I believe it was, and then what we had is $30,000. And I thought, well, no insurance on the building.
And then there was a fine for becoming that motion. So you have 12 violations. Was two near the building. No guard post around the tank frame, no even on the diesel tank. Pipe came from bottom, needs to be piped from the top. No anti-siphon check valves or electric solenoids valves for positive cutoff. Gas tanks that are 1,100 gallon or less can be regulated by the local fire marshal. Any tank need to refer back to the state code. These tanks are 2,000 gallon tanks, 2,000. There was two of them. There's no spill plans for the system. They were not mounted on the tank torch, to the tank torch, porch, excuse me. Both pumps need total valves to prevent spillage. And the gas tank did not have pressure vacuum vent, which helps stop evaporation. So that's where your OSHA came in. Tanks did not have overfill protection on them. And the diesel tank is not double walled. And for this tank requires dike walls and valves to let the water out. The gas tank was not being in above the roof and it should be 12 inches off the ground, or 12 feet off the ground. So there was several different.
Let me ask this, do we still buy diesel locally?
Yes, we do.
Could those people pump that diesel for us at our office since we buy diesel from there?
They would not pump the old diesel out of that old tank for us. Now, in ones that were currently there, yes, they will. At the EMS base, they will when we move.
We probably have a contract for recycling.
Yes.
We got a contract for recycling.
Yes. But the actual tank that is located at the Ford Hill property, they will not pump out.
That fuel will probably go bad.
Probably won't work again. Well, I'm still saying, you know, they should pump it out there for us if we buy diesel from them all the time.
Well, they did in the truck, so maybe.
Can't get out.
Somebody, you can't get out of a water.
We'd have to stand on that and step in water.
They usually stop before they get to, I mean, your water is not being a problem at that time now.
They need to turn one sand, one.
But they will move the others that's located, the reserve fuel for us.
How did we find the local man who's going to pump it?
Actually, I think Greg found it. It is Robbie Hyde from Stecoy.
You have to get a permit to do this, don't you?
I mean, it's a.
That's what he does, yeah. But it was for $600.
Or certification, I heard.
It's in the one.
Now, he works on all these guys.
Was that a law company?
Robbie?
Robbie and his dad, but they did that here down at the ranch, or Atoa. And Mike Hyde's brother.
He used to work for me.
Good people.
Well, without a doubt, those EMS tanks, I mean, they're developed, Ford Hill's going to be up. All right, let's move right on, folks. If we could please, any other discussion with regard to the last issue?
Manager Cable had asked for board approval to see RFPs for structural engineer at the upper plant building. That way, if we're moving toward administrative offices up there, then we would know the structural, if it is structurally sound. And he requested that he be allowed to go out.
We need that information for that.
For the main hall? Plant building or administrative building or what?
That can go in the form as a directive.
Okay, now, this is just for RFPs.
RFPs, that is correct. The next item is the cemetery commission request on the employees raises. At their March 2nd, 2013 meeting in Old or New Business, Hugh Smith made a motion for the cemetery crew to receive the 25 cent across-the-board raise that all other county employees received in July 2012 and to pay to be retro from last year. Gary Holloway seconded the motion, vote was unanimous. Greg Cable put this before the county commissioners, and in Greg's absence, I will be presenting. What it was, whenever they received the 25 cent across the board, Bray County's not over the cemetery commission nor the travel and tourism. They have their own authorities. So any type of raise or hiring has to go through the authority. And I had told them that in the past, that I would just need a motion and a second from the minutes to present to this board for approval. As far as the monies, Ms. Martin can tell you how they're doing on their budget, but it is in the ordinance that they do go by the Bray County personnel policy. I did look that up. So they are held under the same conditions as any other county personnel is.
So what I'm hearing you saying is, is it's taking them eight months?
Yes.
To do this, get this done? And stop the county's?
No, no, I kept telling them, I didn't have a problem presenting it to the board. I just had to have a motion and I think a directive from the cemetery commission. But I think it just kept getting discussed, but no action was taken on it. And I couldn't bring it before you till an action was actually taken. Okay, and the next thing is a reminder of the meeting day change. And I think that Commissioner Edwards had mentioned this before. We'll be meeting on Monday, April 22nd instead of April 15th. And I just wanted to do that as a little FYI.
I just want to go ahead and say, I asked this board to, if they would consider changing it. And you say, well, that was for personal reasons, yeah, but they wanted to have, you know, both more, we could have, then fine. Then my daughter's expecting a grand child. So that was a reason for it. There's no other reason.
Did you agree?
You didn't agree, it goes wrong. No. No. And the thing is, is that, yeah, they're having a technical issue.
Okay, and we have a new and reappointments of the HCCBG committee. And I will say, some of these in this committee are divided out into various committees. This is just the whole lump together. You know, there's some that are on the nursing home and there's some that is on HCCBG senior center, some are on the senior target legislature. So, but what she did to make it easier on us, and we can approve these for a period of two years instead of a one, but it's for 2013 and 2014 if the board so chose. But I gave you a list of the people. It has to be various people from different sectors in the county, like pastors, residents, of course, county employees, which were planners, but different people that if you would, just look over that and.
Okay, and I believe some of the commissioners may not be here, we're not in the work section, but with the Smoky Mountain Center, Matt, is that?
Yes.
And the Smoky Mountain Center, which is about the fifth page back through bottom, we're allowed to, to be membership of with Smoky Mountain Center. And we actually had pre-listed there, but the action taken was to have Greg Cable in place of Tracy Jones as that alternate. So that's why that's done.
Yeah, that was the most oversight on my, yeah. But like I said, this is an ongoing document. It changes, you know, as the boards come available or things change, you know, like when Commissioner Smith left. So it will always be a work in progress. But if there's anything in there that you ever see that needs to be teaching, please let me know.
We have one, the greatest side, sorry, Stan.
Okay.
Jordan?
The Rena? Okay.
Rena.
Rena, okay.
Rena, Rena, sorry, Mrs. Rena.
Rena, what did you say? Did I want them to share?
Yeah, she may have went back to side.
And we'll be acting on just this particular committee?
Yes. Yeah, that's the only one big to be added tonight, besides, and the removal of that was okay. The S.
I moved the register.
Right. Okay, we had had a request on the DSS curb stop. Since we had this all redone, they had asked me about putting up curb stops. And I think Commissioner L. and I had discussed it. And we felt presenting it to the board, it could wait till the next budget fiscal year. We're not talking that many months if it's pleasing to the board. I know they kind of wanted to, what they were saying, the car, here's the curb, and the cars are driving on it, and that's why it was kind of roving. But a lot of that can be dissolved.
I don't think the plastic rubs and sidewalks off.
No. I think it's over years of solving it without your own eyes. Why you mention that, they make it act, and they forehand it, probably see him fly on some of those, but there's not on the concrete nor the paper.
I think that's what Josh and him gets now, since the relation with little bit, that rig yourself down around the park.
One thing though, you said what David did was.
I did not see it. He was supposed to send a picture.
David came up with the idea of, David Hyde, he came up with the idea of fixing the lube, like they have, I think, the new trade building. And he fixed one, and it's out. And he made it to prototype, he put out here, and start the same purpose. But he is right, but his concern is because it's green concrete right now, it's not going to be hard for a while. And he's right, there were several vehicles the other day that were, I mean, were riding on it. It may damage the car too, but it's scraping away out of the concrete.
The wooden curb curb stops were $15 versus $100 for the rubber. So, I mean, that's something we need to.
And they can make them, they can make them sell, and you have.
Just all day.
Is that wood pre-worked?
Yeah, yeah, and he's got one set out there, and then put down, and have it service same purpose.
So that price, I love it.
How many do they need?
It was 11, usually.
So that's 11 times $15.
I'm thinking do that, can you? Wood stops, park stops? I mean, you go get it down, I just don't think that.
I'm putting trees, I'm looking good.
I can't wait to just saw sidewalk back there. I just can't wait.
We haven't hit great quality.
Do they get that door thing?
Can't go out the door yet, yeah.
The way you're going, you're going back.
Just an FYI, the ambulance will be coming this afternoon, roadworthy on Wednesday, I think.
If they inspect it?
If they get it inspected.
I know we were writing about the service a little bit, but it doesn't sound like it back yet.
The cars will be here, the EMS first, and then the sheriff cars will be coming a little bit later.
They think around the first week night.
All right. Mark, good time.
I know my ambulance is too low, I touch you on that. But I gotta thank you. This is a 350. And how they're starting to get the 450s, I don't know, but we could add another ambulance forward, also by the difference between the 350 and 450.
The biggest one was brakes on them, when they started getting 450s, because 350s then still had drum brakes on the rear, that was the big one.
If they were at, so we've done it.
They got this all the way around.
Whenever they had the drum brakes on rear, that's where your front was at, because they helped.
Well, you know, we keep kicking around the idea of fleet plan. I mean, our county manager passed, I've asked about that, and that really needs to be done. And I think it's something we're moving toward and, you know, not having them sit on the side of the road as long as time you can do anything about it, is to be able to rotate those out.
With the purchase of the new sanitation area, we'll have a place for our vehicle maintenance to have a shop that it can actually work out of, and give you some lifts and stuff in there. Because, you know, used to be what he has to work out of now, the rescue squad.
450 hours, no, it is. 450 hours, or 50.
I don't think.
Yeah. The newer old business, firstly, we had a grand jury inspection of our jail. Excellent, excellent. There was only a little broken mirror in the laundry room in an entrance. They wanted a sign that says, warning, there's a stamp as you come out, you know, where that stamp is as you go into the jail. That was the only, but we received two excellence.
Yay.
Same inch back, you must have come back.
Well, I mean, I'm, it's usually something.
It cost us quite a bit last time.
Brothers with the grills and.
Several thousand, 15,000.
This was grand jury inspection.
Okay, there's, okay, thank you.
This is probably the first time since I've been here that we got a good, a bug pour from the grand jury. The last time or two, they were really critical.
What was it, so the grand jury?
A true copy. Oh, our county could use a new jail. We know that.
I heard that.
That's just a, yeah.
I get emails, I say that.
Notice holiday closure, we will be closed on Friday, March 29th, Observatory Friday. So that will be on the 29th. News release we got today from the US Forest Service, they will be closing Tatham Gap Road because of damage caused by the storm that occurred earlier this winter.
And they didn't have a shot?
Approximately 3.3 miles will be closed, all forms of traffic on the Tatham Gap Road. There is not a determination date of when it could be reopened. So just wanted an FYI.
May I say something to that? I just want to tell you, might be some of y'all here, we had a conversation, that said that the government's coming out with a new plan, it's called PLAC, Federal Lands Access Program. So I'm highly interested in that, so I'll be following up on that. And it has lots to do, you know, with Grantland, that's why it was, it's the Southwest Commission, that if you have a federal land that you need to work on for access, you know, roadways or bike trails or this, that, and the other, they're going to be letting money to be able to do those kinds of projects. But the kind of tip, it's called.
I've been buying during construction, I haven't seen the finished stuff.
Have you seen it?
Yeah, I'm sure.
What?
I'm mildly getting to where I can figure out what you're going to do. I thought we was going to put elevator in.
You know, I was looking at the drain, I said, I was wondering if it's supposed to penetrate through, and I thought, well, I don't know.
Are they going to help? It looks to me like you're going to be able to put one boat in at a time now, or we used to be able to put six.
Seven.
I don't know where you get that one. But this is what I can make speak, they grow up a plant like that. And it's bringing thousands and thousands of dollars, and they could, then add the team, they could put a, a lean, because it was down far enough to do it. And fix it wider, I just don't understand.
I think America goes down to, the big thing is stopping itself, forcing it out of gravity. I think that's what it's all about myself. It's honestly, I'd figure, reasonably, all right through there, like it has.
A lot of money.
Yeah.
So that's the thing, is what October, is that what gets projected?
I'm not sure when finished that's supposed to be.
I'd like to see those, like, in America, in China.
Well, they had a lake on this side that all, when it fell all that rain, yeah, they had to get it out. I think they had to pump it out.
Is that right? Well, I remember running, I was that one.
They're also talking about redoing the one out there near the ranch too, I hear they don't do it the same way.
You know, I think, I was sitting on a meeting, in a meeting out at, what's that, Blue Waters? Out there, they had a meeting with Forest Service and alcohol and all of them. And they were talking about, is there a theater that was out there, or a dump, wood dump on April?
No.
I think that's what they're talking about, they're going to put the theater or something on that that way.
They're all looking, yeah, like they have got down here. I mean, you might wind for a couple boats that they, when they're spending the tax payers and kind of chill, which stay in the federal room, fixing the extreme like they are over here, for the walkway out there right there, nice and like it got down here and that chill on, but don't go to the extreme of wasting tax payers money when they can put in a bar with.
I would say that the way this looks out there right now, if you didn't know better than looks, they do pick up some business down there to chill for, like that. I'd say they're spread out because the time to put in, take them out, and wherever they have a little pitch term. So here, there's a lot of people.
One more item. Our sanitation director came to me today and would like to request that you consider closing the Sweetwater dumpster site. It took them four and a half hours today to clean the garbage that has been thrown out on the ground. There was three garbage, green garbage cans full of trash that was on the ground. That's how much they had to pick up and put in the cans. Three complete full of those dumpster cans. And he said, what's happening? They're no longer letting them go through the dumpsters out here at the Snowbird site due to the recycling, and they're coming out here and destroying the one on Sweetwater.
And cursing.
And we are paying rent there, so that would be one way to eliminate some more rent. But that is, he just asked if you would consider that, because that was going to be a problem area.
That's in our neighborhood, Connie.
Yes.
Well, I was up there yesterday, and then they attacked her, like, four, five, five. There was a little stuff on the ground.
What is the procedure when you get a tag done with an enforcement order?
That's probably something we need to work on, but we're going to do it, we need to get the law and laws on them, if they can, hold the law, and if not, we need to put it in isolation, and I miss that.
We have an ordinance.
We have, we have the work.
That could be, it could be.
Or it's getting used to, you have the sheriffs, you have the agents, because I know a lot of times they've been turned in, they don't, that's the same. And I know a lot of legal, gets a steal and stuff out of it, but they also leave it laying on the ground.
It's dangerous, really, for them to be inside the dumpsters. Number one, the risk that they get cutting themselves or.
Well, you know, they're death calls. Is that not right?
And if we have to pick it up off the side, on the ground, after somebody's getting cut, that's good, now it was for us.
Right. And I put my needles in the bottom, or I even burn, or the place I burn, it's at the hive. And most places, it starts in the garden, you start with one layer or two. What we don't know too, instead of, you can walk around and all that other stuff, like, that's a lot.
Oh, it's horrific mess, I saw it. I spoke to one of the people working there, and they seem to know who's doing the throwing out of the trash. So that's why I asked, what is, what is law enforcement procedure?
Well, you know, it comes down to, we've had the conversations at our sanitation board meetings, you know, about enforcement. And, you know.
More than sheriffs, I have.
You know, because, you know, if you turn in a tag number, and I know, I've heard you saw.
I've done that. I've done that. I've done that. I've gone to the police station, I turned in a tag number, he opened a case. Never heard anything from it.
35.
But, you know, that is, that is something enforcement. And, you know, really, and I just look at it, and the best possible, and let's see who was I talked to about.
82, 83.
Most likely, they're not going to enforce it without whoever gets the tag number sees it, there's going to be a witness. I mean, that's, that's like calling the motorcycle past W.R.
No, he did discuss with the guy, I have to, having one of our workers stay out there if we.
At Sweetwater? But then when are you doing it at midnight, you know?
If you can put a gap, you should lock.
I think we should lock.
They used to lock, I think.
Well, it's going to come to man sides, you know, if we can get, we're self-supporting.
Where are you at? Where are you at, bud? Well, we're down here, we need, we need the adopted, and you can go back or, or.
Well, that would control, partially control, is to man those stations. And of course, if they're manned, ladies, that's when they get cluttered again, if we don't close them up. Then if we close them, they'll back up again and let the gate throw it out, so it's just a major problem.
Well, the one in Sweetwater, I put it right on the right of it. I mean, I put it right up on there, as close as I can get away legally from those, you know, and then have to work with it. And there are those that are going to be sent to just go ahead and just load in where they possibly can. But you see, that's not the primary problem. I know, you know, I've got the highway, you know, in Sweetwater, I know you all do a big part of that. And, you know, that's, that's the issue. But, you know, people that come to throw their garbage, you know, they put them in the dumpsters, but it's, you know, the dumpster die, that's the one that's doing. Or somebody's going to bring, you know, the couches and the sofas and, you know, all the other stuff out there. And that's a conversation we were going to have too, about whether just let that go on. And it's a lot cheaper than having to send, you know, a truck and staff out there and have to get it up and bring it.
We have lots of people in this county also that Brian said to throw away because they don't make it, and still throw it in the end, they're just running from it.
That's right.
And if I made it.
And I'm telling you, I've done that. I have, it's something huge. And, you know, we've got thrift stores, you know, that would take it if it was usable and drive a little farther, they could take it to those places.
I had a conversation with the lady at the dumpsters about that. She said, I wish we had a place, though, that we could take this stuff, that other people might use it. I said, we do, it's called two thrift stores.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's just, it's an education thing. But it is a problem. But, you know, the issue of manning sites, you know, runs into the whole issue of staffing and money and everything else that comes involved with it. But I have a lot of hope in the recycling.
If you pass all of it, I believe it's just another main street, and you take a bag and close, they'll give you a $10 receipt, take it with you.
Yeah. I mean, there's things that could be done, that needs to be done that way.
There's a police shirt.
They can't, they can't kill people out in the woods.
Well, the Forest Service put up cameras on their gates, I don't see why we could.
I tell you.
Yeah.
It's cameras.
And you hope. Did they ever arrest anybody yet?
Not to my knowledge.
Well, anyway, I think it's a good idea with cameras, I mean, but then.
Yeah, put someone where no one knows, if they're there, they'll take them.
And you have to put that other camera, where you have the camera, it's way for search down their edge. Well, I know they're for a while, but school buses, you know, had their kids put up in the front, you know, that you can watch back on school buses, and they didn't have enough cameras, so they swapped the cameras around. And, you know, how do you, how do you go about it? Move it from place to place, where you can kind of catch, I'm sure there's some creative ways of doing it, you know, with technology today, hammer, you know, transmitter, you know, I mean, getting down to really small, to where you can do that. And it's, it's awful that you have to think about doing that. But, you know, it's got to stop.
We looked one up out on the border, oh, the one we got was right, and the hole was supposed to be down the road.
Are you serious, right? Are you serious right now? Okay. Do you work, Minnie?
Yeah, I work.
Okay, so I guess we're waiting on the sheriff? And we just had that conversation and, could we go ahead and, is there any other, new or old business here, go on with the action items? Any year old, that's it?
No, I had.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and, and Miss Burke again, please, um, help me make sure that I get everything done properly and get everything done. The first on your, on your list there for action items is releases and discoveries, and I have those here, the total discoveries of fifty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. And total releases of five hundred and three dollars and eighty-five cents. Do we have motion?
Check.
Have a second? Any further discussion on it, any discussion on it? All pros that cover the camp, all votes on them. Okay, Golden Leaf presentation for Stanley and, um, and Secoah, uh, this has to do with the, um, what it is, is having to do with this right here, and I think I need more time, I'll just be honest with you. Um, it has to do with the T G G, this was presented during our workshop period. And what this is, is that Stanley Furniture is offering training and, uh, and has broken down into classes and dates that, uh, folks in our community in the business sector can actually go and take training. And what it is, is that the E D C would pay this, pay this amount of money. And they've already got this cleared through Golden Leaf, uh, that these would, these expenses would be covered. And also, they're wanting to go and put in, um, grant proposals and they want to do the grant proposals at the same time. That's for the training at, uh, at, uh, that's gonna be offered anyway over at, uh, at Stanley Furniture. And then also, the sheet that is there also for projects at the Secoah Valley Center. Uh, they were gonna put those in at the same time. So, those sheets are in your packet there and, and I asked specifically, as Andy was doing the presentation, if, uh, if in fact Golden Leaf had approved these already. And, and we were assured in that this has already been approved by Golden Leaf. So, it's a question of whether, you know, we wanna do it or not. The E D C is gonna be spending that amount of money and, uh, also having to go and, um, and have the proposals sent in at the same time for the projects at Secoah Valley Center. And it has to do with the gym nation that's rocking to the ground. And like mine is, Lord, who owns the property there is county. So, um.
It's on Long Street or Gino?
Yes, sir. It's Secoah Gym. Uh, they've got a lot of good things that have happened over the years there, very committed for everything they've done. So, that's what we're being asked to vote on tonight, so that's kind of the explanation if we had that. And, uh, I look at it and I said, is, uh, is Danny Gerlach and company saying, yeah, uh, then we need to go ahead and then do that, that's my fault. Uh, listen to anybody else on, on, on the board here.
The thing that I see is, they have to take the yard of it and, and the issue with the, you, you doubt it.
Absolutely, absolutely, very commended for what they've done.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Okay, and, um, one of the things that Andy said too, and I'm just saying it again for, for understanding, is that we're looking at evaluations being done by our, our department heads. And if they have an ability to get some training to do that, then, you know, be able to manage it better and to have that to be paid, you know, this way, then it'll fit in well with the plans that you have from the pay plan and everything else. And then do not just the department heads, if you go on with other critical staff. Uh, Andy is great. He's one, he's gone through this program.
I'm kind of in this program with their standard to. You know, like, lane management stuff, it, it worked out good for us as, as a machine operator.
As a machine operator.
Yeah, they set down, how many pieces of special metal machine iron in the first night, that whatever the store, like, mom's she goes to, uh, six pieces of iron, and they could operate around twenty-four, and that's running quite a bit. No stop.
So, you had kind of a negative impact?
Yeah, definitely. But it was, it was our supervisors and stuff, yeah, it was, you know, but that was time to machine, it's, it's been easy stuff. We rented it for, for the, instead of the.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Maybe they have a better chance.
Freshen off. Are we gonna do attendance tonight or we want to have further study in it? I think the first class is being offered, uh, March twenty-fifth.
So, this, put down two and twelve.
Okay, all right, so we'll take this for now. I, I don't think it's actually negative, we just didn't have a better attend, and Andy said we didn't have that on tax, so this will be taken, thank you, Lord. A visitor study for the town of Robbinsville, Traveler Tourism Grade, as I understand it, um, also the town, uh, town of Montana Dam is also participating, so I don't know if that amount.
It will help.
Go down. Um, and then, um, Connie, do you come here with this right here, um, the support of visitor study for the words?
I just need to give some feedback on what we're doing well and what we need to, to see if right or wrong.
Okay, and there's.
I think it'll be beneficial. Anytime you can get real numbers to work with, it's a help to you.
So, what do they come to, Miss Pinky, uh, if we have that, it's five hundred and fifty for grade?
Four hours to go.
Yeah. And this is a one-time study?
It's a one-time study, I don't think they've gotten, um, they've not gotten verification from the Chamber of Commerce whether they were gonna put any money in it though. So, it's not a for sure thing that all four of those are going in on it.
Okay.
And with the chamber's budget, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
It wasn't brought up yet to the chamber, so I don't know.
Four hundred and forty dollars each.
And she just made something to the Chamber of Commerce.
They did, at the Traveler Tours and they talked about the chamber also being a partner.
Because then every T C meeting that I attend and is Amy and I talk a lot, there's so many things that wouldn't just know what our demographic is and how many are coming through. And they call us, every organization listed can do so much better on targeting. The marketing and then we can try and figure out, like we were talking the other day about, well, what if we raised the sales tax? What would the impact be on county residents versus out of county people?
Yeah.
We know because we have those numbers. And we have, and we have no clue.
And then the issue of office tax.
Yeah.
But you know, that, that's kind of the deal too, is where the municipality is already increased and you can't go up, right?
Well, see, that's what we're, we're trying to find out because, you know, we know.
Right, because our.
Didn't get one. We don't know. We're trying to get an answer from the school of government.
Okay.
Now, what are, what are options on now, states out.
We can at Allen Lee, the town can choose to do whatever they want.
Yeah.
But as a county, we can go up to six percent if I'm not mistaken. Because you think about Higginville, it's like twenty-one percent.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it just depends on the statute says, because that statute says.
I'll tell you what, we have the sheriff here, we've got these other action items, let's go ahead and, uh, thank you for coming down. Yes. Short notice. We've had a conversation about the, 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 the dump sites and Randy, you wanna go ahead and address it?
Well, you, as well as I know me, you know, you probably go to fire truck and take it with you. And there's usually a mess up there. Usually one on Sweetwater, usually one Secoah, that's one out here sometimes, but what we're looking at, honestly, is that there is a law in the books that if you catch them, that you can right there to take them. That's what, that's what we'd like to do. So, and.
Do y'all have a statute of law?
She probably does, but it's, it's skimmed of the point, but we're trying to, we're trying to help the people. Connie and Mike and I, we went and everybody I spoke to too, to, to put Sweetwater back up there where they make the biggest mess.
Yeah, well, those people are mad about slipping it out of the gorge too.
And putting it up there. But if you catch one of them, that's a, that's illegal too. Uh, that, that'd be littered, uh, you can get any of them for littered.
I think one of the questions that I have, Mickey, and I'm sorry to jump in, Randy.
Go ahead.
Is that if, if somebody comes and makes a report and it comes out that you have to have a witness to that, I mean, is there.
You would actually say somebody doing it.
Okay, you'd see somebody doing that.
Yeah.
And.
But what I, if, if you're, if Jordan Davies is passing by Sweetwater, they're going to Secoah on duty patrol.
And they pull in and say somebody doing it.
If they pull in and make a circle, then people's gonna start thinking, well, they're not gonna be here in time.
Yeah.
Uh, even though, and then go on, come back, do the same thing. You know, and they need nothing to pull in there and turn around.
Yeah.
And over Billy's, I've seen it, I'll go out, I've waited in parking lot.
There, there are again, if, if somebody picked, pulled in, I would pick up a little garbage on them. And they see one of Mickey Patrol cars pulled in now, they're gonna stop them. Mickey can't get them till they see them throw it in now.
Yeah.
They ain't gonna throw that in now while that patrol car.
It's just like people throwing litter out.
Just like painting litter out. He, he'll have to see him toss it in there before he can buy a ticket.
Is there any charge, one for solid waste, like so they bring a couch or anything, when they take that to the landfill, is there any charge they have to pay for that?
That goes over the scales, that is charged, but we'd be kicking that around too.
Yeah, that's, that one, might give them some incentive to take it out, or if it wasn't any charge, it'd really be a cheap problem if you can. To know how to go pick up all this, I think, whatever, a lot of couches and.
Yeah, well, the real problem, Mickey, and I think.
But you still gotta pay for that weight too, not sure.
And, and the thing is, is people dumpster dives.
Yeah.
I mean, they go through and they take everything in the cans and throws it out, tear it open, and then walk away.
Yeah. And they did the same thing to shoot range, they'll take cardboard boxes and stuff and thorns and shoot and leave all that mess and we go back and break it in.
Fair, well.
They're extremely, but they won't let you push, uh, so much stuff, they'll fire, they'll tell us about.
Well, you see, this is something we really need to talk about in the sanitation board. We need to look at, it comes down to the point where we have to find somebody to buy cameras. And I don't know what's admissible in evidence, you know, I don't know whose law force would stand by point, but if we have some pictures of somebody going and dumpster diving and throwing garbage out and leaving.
Yeah.
What, what, how does that hold up in court?
Well, with this judge, we're darn away, I, I, I don't, it'd be hard to say. We got a guy, we got, had a guy Thursday, we've caught twice in the last year with marijuana, this lifetime was a pound and they wouldn't, I'll charge you admission.
Do what?
Yeah.
I, okay.
Well, I mean, they're, they're already on television now, they sense the moon chimes. And it's unreal to, to see that on television. They got stocks up there and they start dreaming early so it can get in the market before everybody gets theirs done in the file.
Well, it's coming.
Mickey, I, I think on this garbage deal, I, I know your hand is tied to see, to see somebody. Place you on the outside, but it's heavy, it's on the stove. Business make a sweep through them garbage cans, if they just go through, it'd be a big deterrent to a lot of people because they would know that you have an eye.
Well, what can we publish in the paper? For a county sheriff's department that is will be patrolling. I mean, really, it's called convenience, that's what it is.
Yeah.
It's convenience, I'd.
But it is a convenience.
Why don't you sit?
Can, can that be a fair assessment, Mickey? I know you guys are already loaded with everything else for what to do, but I think it'd make a real difference. If a cruiser, just every now and then, wherever you're having a dispatch patrol, would just kind of say, well, you know, make a, make a pit stop, track, trash stop. I know it scared the turkey out of me.
I had you in Sweetwater three or four days ago, set up for thirty minutes, somebody had left a lot of oil there, I was like, oh, yeah. It's been about a hundred pounds, I was about sixty. So, I said to the police, I don't know, they were about, like, she wouldn't buy a cage for it.
Yes, I worry now we get about that.
Well, can we get, is that an idea? Maybe just start, or don't tell. Or don't tell.
I think anybody's got to tell.
Well, what it comes down to then, Mickey, if it comes to that and, and one of your officers does pull in there and he does catch him in the act, will your officers do it? Will they say, hey, that's a violation of this?
Yeah.
I don't think it'd take much.
It, it wouldn't take, but two hundred.
I'll see you.
We need help?
Not a lot of help.
Right.
I'm making.
We need to wire here. But the fines on that.
On the board, that's okay.
And you need.
And that would release that, you know, a hundred, that's a five to a dollar, like you said.
And we need the ordinance numbers and everything else. So, this is kind of a revival thing, those things have been there.
Yeah.
It's a question of enforcement, and I think the camera thing's a good idea.
Yeah.
You know, and.
I actually have a camera because the last time we're gonna ask for it, there's not really any cameras, I just.
Yeah, I think the fines are about five hundred dollars first of all, and then it goes up to, I want to say, for your favorite.
What's going up? Literate and state them.
But if you, if you cameras here, you know, so much to shoot my eyes.
I know from the personal experience, I, I pull in dumpsters, it's quick, quite often. And even being a commission, when I pull in there, there'll be two or three of you here sitting there. They could, no activity. I've sat there and talked to people fifteen, twenty minutes, nobody showed nothing in. Was it on our trucks? Nobody from our league can come back and speak here.
And the trash is there.
Okay.
They, they got a keen eye on it, but it's caused an attack there.
And so, I mean, really, I, it's, it is a convenience, I mean, honest to goodness it is, and, and it looks like that you would at least, if you're going to dumpster dive, it's what we call, actually not that considered. You know, but it's illegal, I mean, really, I mean, it's, it's gotta be every kind of health code law and, and the books about it. And then there's the issue of having local organs.
And if it look pretty silent, it gets bigger than that organ now.
Yeah, shoot.
Because there won't be no loading cans in that.
There, there are people already.
The products that I want.
But, you know, that's how it is. And, um.
Yep.
That's it. So, we, we published that. And I don't think it'll take many.
No.
I mean, I think you say, and you're saying, well, you're trying to bust somebody, yeah, I mean, you're trying to.
It's for everybody.
It's for real, it's the kind of thing you want to do, it's for real. And, um, and if you catch me, I'm busting. If you catch any of us, we're busting. That's it. So, if it's clarification, we need to put it in there, you know, our, our local sheriff and, and deputies are gonna be taking, you know, patrol in those areas and see if that helps with the reduction of it, and if somebody does, like you say, you know the limits of the law, that what you can, can't do and gather. But it just takes one or two times, it's created. And then if so, then we need to start talking in the sanitation committee about, you know, they'll try and find the minds to do the cameras, you're right, they know they're all shooting out. And whatever, but there's some creative stuff, I'm sure, probably some stuff we could tell them about right now, but it, that's what we need to do. That's how I feel. Andy, have anything else to say?
Yeah, I, I regret having to leave, but, um, my baby sister, my sister is, I don't know.
Okay, all right.
Keep going back tomorrow.
Okay.
She's doing better today than yesterday.
All right, then, thank you, Sheriff, I really appreciate it. Connie, the answer is, I know we have to go, but are there any of these things right here, I mean, we're gonna be going through these in a hurry. Are you our good?
Yeah, whatever you have.
Okay, all right, well, uh, everybody knows what, what's about it. All right, so we, we came down to the Traveler Tourism Grade in town of Bronzville, that amount of money.
Yes.
And I've heard it, it comes said it's fine, so can we make a, a motion to the effect then that we've put a limit? I mean, and, and go this, uh, so I don't know what the limit would be on it, because you're saying that the chamber hasn't made a decision yet?
That would be four forty divided by five, so it could be down to three hundred at some, so we can keep going down.
So, the five kick is the max and we agree to that, to do this a couple of surveying? All right, can we have a motion to that back?
John Martin?
Can your motion have a second, any further discussion? Any further discussion about this? All approved? Okay, all opposed, okay. Use funds for economic development website, I think that was the amount, how much? Two thousand, was it two thousand? Two thousand dollars?
Yes.
And that's for the webmaster? Everything else, and again, it's EDC each month.
Yes.
All right.
He's, he's fine and he's done to do planning with us. Because we didn't start until later in the year, we got savings and health insurance and stuff.
Oh, okay.
There's money there.
All right. We have a motion to use funds from EDC website?
Motion.
My motion, have a second, any discussion? Okay, any discussion? All approved? All opposed, okay? Um, E and R schedule, right, in April, I think we all have been discussing about that. And that date again.
For twenty-two. From nine to one.
Right, E and R will begin on April twenty-two at nine AM. From one to five, and plan it for through the week.
Yes.
All right, through twenty-six. All right, have a motion to be.
Joe move.
Okay, we have a second. Second, second, any further discussion? Okay, all approved? All opposed? All right, temporary help in office?
That is the, um, uh, tax office.
Right.
And we had approved her.
Right.
And she is willing to work, so, uh, at first there was a little bit of, uh.
Right.
Need to check, but that's not an issue, so we can do that. And I need to discuss a little bit enclosed regarding that personnel. Uh, because I need to make sure that we're clear on that.
Okay, is it going, is it going to have an impact on the, the, the votes?
No, it would not have an impact on what it has to do with.
Okay, what that is, is it is that we're doing the, um, reallow in-house? And in order to accomplish that, we're going to have additional help?
Jolene ways.
Jolene, we used to do this.
Yes.
And, um, I think we've already talked about this, like.
We actually did a poll.
Okay, all right, we need to do that, that's right. And and we found out also, can I say this about the issue of, uh? Rhett, she was mentioned in line for it anyway.
Yes.
So, so that was, that was it there. All right, so we have a motion that we have that temporary out in the office for the reevaluation.
Motion.
All right, we have a second, any further discussion? All approved? All opposed, okay? Um, the appointment of Andy Cable to the Southwest Regional Planning Organization, TCC Committee. And, um, I, I'm chair of the RPO, and it's, uh, it's good to have two members. I want you to know that right now, so, um, I'd recommend that. So we have a motion that we appoint Andy Cable to the Southwest Commission Regional Planning Organization, TCC Committee.
Joe move.
All right, second, any discussion? All approved? Okay, all opposed, thank you. All right, next is the library contract, I think we've already covered that, um, and those conditions have been met, and, um. We know concerns are with that. Do I hear a motion that we accept a library contract as presented?
Joe move.
Okay, have a second. Second, all right, any further discussion? Okay, this, uh, next, uh, motion I'd ask for is for the transfer station class, and I think it's hosting class.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we're going to be having a motion to swing county and.
Of play and Cherokee.
In Cherokee County.
I mean, close the sanitation, uh, department on that day, which will be Thursday.
Okay, and the addition on that was, is that we have one of the, uh, recycling, recycling worker there.
At the gate, yes.
At the gate. Okay, we have a form of motion. Motion.
Joe move.
Second, any discussion? All approved? We will advertise that?
Uh, it's this time in Thursday, I believe, but I will host a, a sign, and of course, they will be at the gate.
And Donnie tell all of the ones that usually always drop scale.
Uh, Thursdays are real slow, so he said this morning, that should not be a problem.
Okay. And we have a discussion about the tri-counter request for some of them. And, um, we, uh, what was it, desire, whether we could direct them to any school program and at least.
Okay.
All right, can we contact them? All right, term of trade in the courthouse, have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, second. Okay, any further discussion? And we need to discuss that is the facility funds that we use.
Yes.
We do remember that. Okay, all approved, can put it in, all opposed, like son. Okay, maybe three of the personnel policies presented to the play plan, and I have to do the percentages. Um, and that's presented by. Kim, and that'll be, and that's the amendment that we can do. And, uh, so we can go ahead and do that, that's in the packets. But your motion we got.
Joe move.
Okay, have a second, should I? Okay, all approved? All right, next is the removal of tanks, the upper plank in EMS building.
Removal of the DASO for this.
The DASO, the DASO, for the six hundred dollars. And, um, when we talk about removal of tanks, that's going to be done in-house.
In-house.
And that's going to be possible, and then moving those from up to EMS.
Yes.
Also, this is right here. Okay, we have a motion.
Joe move.
Okay, we have a second. Second, okay, any further discussion? All approved? Okay, thank you. All right, cemetery commission request, uh, that the twenty-five cents across the board is given in July two thousand twelve. Upon their motion, um, that the twenty-five percent retroactively from that July date can be given to the members of the cemetery commission. But your form, that form of motion, please, motion. And second, okay, all approved, second, put it in. All right, next is the approval of the HCC BG committee for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and number one, change.
Replacing Donna Sari with her sister Rita.
Okay.
Carver.
Okay, have that in form of motion, please.
Joe move.
Have a second, should I? Any further discussion? All approved? Ms. Clark.
That's all I thought.
Okay. All right. We think this means we've got everything covered, I'm sure we got it right.
Yeah, we, we discussed the, um, Sweetwater side of the rating with the support of the sheriff on that.
Okay, and what about the sanitation purchase?
Uh.
That's going to be in a form of resolution.
Yes, and I do have the resolution fixed up, and Attorney Cody did review it. Uh, Donna, it's okay. I know we've not, we don't have the, um, acreage yet, but what I did is listed the book and page number that's listed in the Graham County Registry. Uh, so the actual land itself is what is listed here. Uh, that, that's listed in the, in the books. I did.
And and eventually we noted that we had public hearing with regard to that.
Yes.
And, uh. We'll go ahead and hang on that side, this pleasure is for, we'll start the process. Okay, do I need to read that resolution or is?
Um, do we need to read this one? The resolution out there or?
This for right here. Bear with me. This is a resolution of the Graham County regarding the purchase of real property, Herb Cody and Y. Claudine Cody. Whereas Herb Cody and Y. Claudine Cody owns a certain tract of real property located in the area known as Snowbird Road. Said real property being more particularly described in a lease agreement reported on twel- on January twelve, two thousand four. At Book two thirty-nine, page one thirty, one eighty-five. Graham County Registry released, and a subsequent agreement recorded on January twelve, two thousand four, at Book two thirty-nine, page one ninety-four. Graham County Registry, the first refusal. In which Graham County Government built a transfer station upon said land and. Whereas Herb Cody and Y. Claudine, in desirous of selling and conveying the above reference real property of Graham County and. Whereas any buildings located upon above reference real property is being used by Graham County Sanitation Department. And by Herb Cody and Y. Claudine and. Whereas the Graham County Board Commissioners and the County Manager had inspected the real property and found that the real property would be of benefit to the people of Graham County and. Whereas Graham County is in need of real property for future use of the transfer station for the benefit of the people of Graham County and. Whereas North Carolina's general statute one sixty-eight dash two seventy-four allows for such a purchase by Graham County from Herb Cody and Y. Claudine Cody. And whereas the sales price of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the real property is fair and reasonable. And whereas it would be in the best interest of Graham County and its citizens to purchase said real property at said sale price. Station in future projects for the benefit of the citizens of Graham County and. Whereas Graham County Board Commissioners have duly discussed and considered the purchase of said real property. And have concluded that it would be in the best interest of Graham County and assistance to purchase said real property from Herb Cody and Y. Claudine Cody. For said price, said real property being more specific than defined. In the deed of conveyance, a copy of which being reviewed and approved by the Board of Commissioners. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Graham County Board Commissioners that the above reference as depicted on, on and Graham County Registry. The purchase from Herb Cody, Y. Claudine, Y. Claudine Cody for the purchase for a first price of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Said real property being more specifically defined in the deed of conveyance. Said deed and easements and exceptions contained therein being hereby approved. Be it hereby further resolved by the Graham County Board Commissioners that the Chairman of the Graham County Board Commissioners and the clerk of the Board are hereby authorized. And directed to sign any and all documents including a settlement statement necessary to purchase said real property in accordance with the terms and conditions set out therein. And further authorized and directed to pay the sum of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To Herb Cody and Y. Claudine Cody for said real property. And to place on record in Graham County Registry of Deeds, the deed executed by Herb Cody and Y. Claudine Cody conveying the real property to Graham County. And thereby evidence Graham County's consent and acceptance of the terms and conditions set, set out therein. And then we will, uh, resolve, uh, this date and signatures of the Commissar Board and our clerk. That's done. So having done that, we've done this, uh, but her motion, if we go ahead and approve the resolution as presented.
Joe move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second, any further discussion? All approved, can put it in, all opposed, like son.
And if I made the property at the bank was already signed as a lease agreement.
Right.
To purchase to buy, so we're good there.
Okay, Donna, let me ask you a question about that. Guarantee on that, your dad, how do we, that's, that's in, that'll be in works on this, right? Is that already done for the purchase?
We guarantee.
Well, I mean, we've already got the agreement on the Wacoby bill.
Yeah.
So this is separate and apart. Okay, is that what it's about? And I just want to tell you, he is your dad.
Yeah.
Here to public hearing, did you move a close at the set?
Oh, it wasn't him.
It was, it was really good, they done it, they done the county attorney. And then, and if you could, if you could convey that to your dad and mom.
Well, he, he's actually jacked him doing work.
No, do the, they know it would be painful to close here. So it would be done that, we certainly appreciate that.
The dad that shares the heart. In their honor.
Anything else to explore?
I think that's all I have on that one. The SS curb stops, we can take care of that, that's not, that, that doesn't go over our.
Just tell me how to use one.
Do what?
Tell me for that, it needs a method.
Yeah.
You're on way to getting done.
Want me to tell you to do that sometime?
Very.